Good evening, welcome. This is the Connecticut, Connecticut, listen to me, I'm starting off already. The Guilford, Connecticut Board of Education. It is Tuesday, January 23rd. This is the second of our two public forums on the budget, held in January, following the proposed, receipt of the proposed budget from our superintendent, Dr. Freeman. Again, this is a night in which the public gets to come and talk directly to the board, if they are interested, share their thoughts, their suggestions, their comments on the proposed budget. This is part of a process in which we will engage over the next several months, most intensely over the next month. We will be voting on the budget on February 5th. That budget that we vote on is likely one where we will have made reductions and/or additions to the budget after public input, after individual review of the budget, and after board deliberation. I will be requesting a special meeting for next Monday night for further board deliberation. This gives us more time to discuss before we vote on February 5th. That is, of course, a public meeting, though it will not be public comment. And the last thing I want to say is, throughout this process, any member of the public is welcome to reach out to us. All of our emails are on the Guilford Public Schools website. Additionally, on the website, the public can find the draft budget, the proposed budget, as well as Dr. Freeman's presentation to the board, which walks through not only highlights of that budget, but rationale and the context within which it was developed. So tonight again is for the public. Anyone from the public is welcome to address the board. We ask them to come up to the podium, give their name and address. We ask you to keep your comments within three minutes. We always want to make sure everyone has a chance. And then, again, we will follow this evening, continue to deliberate, and welcome comments through other avenues. So, if anyone would like to address the public, I welcome you to come up now. Sorry, address the board. I'm having trouble today talking. Address the board. Yes. You can, or you can do that afterwards if you'd like. Thank you.
No problem. Hi, how is everyone? Happy New Year. Jessica Harrington, this is the same format, I'll give my address, 464 Granite Road. I think that you heard from many of my peers last night, perhaps other parents, kindergarten parents from A.W. Cox. I first want to say thank you. I appreciate the transparency of this process when bringing forward the budget to the public, you know, each and every year. I know that this is no small feat to be done, and even when I say that, I still know that doesn't even really address the work that goes into putting forth the budget. However, you know, with my review of it, and as a kindergarten parent at Cox, I can't help but notice and voice my disappointment in seeing that a first grade teacher slot at Cox for the upcoming year has not been included. I'm concerned, you know, I think many of you have heard me speak before about the reason why I moved to Guilford. I think, like most families, I moved here because we have a stellar reputation for having a great school system, and the backbone of a great school system are our teachers. And I'm concerned, when I look at the classroom sizes, the ratios of teachers to students at the other elementary schools, we're looking at classroom sizes of 13 and 16 in some schools. In A.W. Cox kindergarten class, if we continue on this way, these class sizes are like 50% larger at Cox, and it's not being addressed. I think it'd be quite simple to do it by adding on another teacher in the upcoming year for our rising kindergarteners. So I just wanted to let you know, I'm excited to see kind of where this goes. I'm glad I can make a comment, but I am concerned. You know, when I think about our teachers, retention is so important. They already have so much that they have on their plate that they're doing to teach our students, and we should appreciate it. And if I were a teacher looking across at other schools, a teacher at Cox, and saw that my peers are teaching classrooms that are 30% smaller than my own classroom, I'd be concerned. I might be thinking, where else can I go for some more equity between my classroom and the classrooms sizes that my peers are teaching? That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll be following right now. My name is George Norton. I live at 3 Farmview Drive here in town. And just following up with, you know, with her concerns of the size of the kindergarten class at A.W. Cox School. I'm more of a process person, I'm not as eloquently speaking as a lot of the people, not the people that I heard last night, so more of a process person. I really like to look into, you know, who will be negatively impacted by, you know, these class sizes, along with, obviously, my concern is my son and his peers at these class sizes, but also the teachers who you're all, you know, effectively responsible for. So, just put something together here quickly. So I understand that adding another teacher to the current kindergarten class at A.W. Cox will be yet another increase in the budget, but the other parents, but I, with the other parents of this class, am sure that, oh my gosh, I am sure that all you realize this is worth the investment for all parties involved. So that's including, you know, the students, as well as educators as well. The question I ask myself is, what is it going to be like for the first grade teachers you are ultimately responsible for when they're assigned 20-plus students each, who are provided 50% less time in instruction than their peers in the other Guilford schools next year? I can imagine the feeling of overwhelm, not only with the quantity of students, but likely the varying levels of abilities as a result of the lower quantity and quality of the instruction these students receive during this critical kindergarten year as a result of these abnormally large class sizes. Having additional teachers, having an additional teacher for this class will allow them to recoup the difference in instruction that the students in Lakes and Liette received this year, with 13 and 15 students per classroom, and receive the education we, as parents, worked and sacrificed a lot for them to have. We have trusted and put our children's futures in the hands of this board, and sincerely hope you all strongly consider adding an additional frictionary teacher at Cox next year, as I'm sure you would all request if your child was in one of these oversized classes. Furthermore, it will give your teachers the ability to do their best work, and our children a chance to receive the foundational skills that will enable them to uphold the stellar academic reputation this town prides itself on, and why my family and I moved here. So, great job, I appreciate all that you do, you know, again, to piggyback, you know, her. We know how much goes into this, and you know how much time, effort, and sacrifice on your part, so we strongly hope that you consider adding an additional teacher to the A.W. Cox kindergarten classes here.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Stevens, and I live at 135 Millstone Drive. I was at the October 18th Board of Ed meeting and listened to many public comments with requests for money to be allocated in certain areas for the 24-25 school year, which included funding for special services such as vision therapy, OT, sensory therapy and PT, funding for the music program, funding for various athletic programs, funding for another teacher for the current large Cox kindergarten class, and funding to support the implementation of the SRBI process, including getting a universal screener for math. We, as parents, have been encouraged to participate in this process and stay engaged, and so I have attended many Board of Ed meetings, and just listened at some and spoken to others. Overall, it has left me feeling like it is hard to be truly engaged, given that the current format for participation can limit how engaged people can be. While I appreciate being able to make public comments, the format does not allow for questions to be answered at all in the moment, even if there might be an easy answer to give. This also really limits any discussion that could be had about issues that might be on parents' minds. While I can appreciate that meetings could get very long if there was lots of discussion, it seems that there are missed opportunities for information to be shared. We are instead encouraged just to email the board, and while I appreciate everyone who is serving on the board, I ought to know that this is a volunteer position, and that the members have jobs and other commitments outside of the board, which might make it difficult to return emails depending on the volume, and that the board might not even be the right group to be providing answers to the questions that are being asked in some circumstances. I work at a large corporation, and when there are meetings that allow for question and answer, if questions cannot be answered on the spot, they are taken away, and an email is sent out shortly after with a list of questions that could not be answered during the meeting, with answers by the appropriate person or department based on the question. This helps us feel heard, and is an efficient way to share information, as more than one person might have the same question, and it provides a level of transparency. Now, we might not always like or agree with the answers that are given, but I can appreciate that the time was taken to answer the questions. I was surprised when the proposed budget came out to see that the only area that had been given funding out of all the areas that were raised by parents was athletics. I was surprised also to see funding for a drama teacher at the middle school level, when that hasn't been really a big topic of discussion in recent meetings that I can recall. I'm also curious if this position is granted through the budget process, and similarly to the Spanish teacher situation, a teacher cannot be found, what happens to that money? I feel it would have been helpful, as a part of the budget presentation, to at least speak to all of the areas that the parents asked for funding, and provide some sort of explanation as to why it was not included in the budget for the upcoming school year. For example, if we are truly not in compliance with our current SRBI process, and no money is being budgeted to support SRBI, then what are we doing to fill any gaps to our current process to bring us into compliance? Or, if you feel we are in compliance, sharing information about how we are in compliance based on issues raised would be helpful. I feel there is room for greater transparency, which would also help build trust between parents and the district, and that there are better ways to foster communication and collaboration between parents, the Board of Ed, and the administration, so we can all work together in the best way possible to support our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Polly Reader, 280 Sage Hollow Road. I actually have two statements, like relatively separate from each other, so I can step back, and if anyone wants to add anything, if I could do.
If you could try to give your comments in three minutes, that would be terrific. Thank you.
So after last night's board committee discussion, I found out that I was not at all alone, in what I was discovering with having a freshman this year. I was initially very surprised a few weeks ago to see the high school exam schedule, the entire school on the same schedule, for four days and review beforehand. And then I thought, I was also like, why the heck are kids taking tests so early in the morning when they should be sleeping? I was just shocked that the schedule was set up the way it is, and then they leave two hours early. Like, why isn't it flipped? It didn't make sense to me. So as the time went along with my kid, it became clear that the classes were stopping, they were ditching, like the ongoing continuing learning, and said, you know, he was waiting for review time from each teacher to say what the format of the assessment was going to be. And stress built and built, of course. And I asked him some questions, and I gradually found out that every class was holding an exam, even though he only has one class that ends this semester, and that they were all comprehensive. I thought, well, you know, some of them would be on the last couple of units, there'd be some projects, there'd be some papers, wouldn't that be valuable way to spend some time, some group work? So, I'm bringing this up now because I think it's, you know, timely with the board's discussion, and with what we're experiencing, and the kids especially. But when we look at how to, you know, there's so much focus about how to utilize 1% or so of the year's operating budget, versus, we have this massive expenditure of more valuable resources, the student and teacher time. We're sinking, you know, at least five entire school days, because they do review and stuff before the four exam days into this. And then that's twice a year. So, it just, it doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. And then, you know, to find out more so that our education professionals here in the district are aware of the research, of course, and we have board members who are aware of the research, who have kids experiencing this. And I really think that, you know, it's just, this is not where actual learning comes from. It comes from assessment that is formative, iterative, embedded, and not these created, comprehensive, like old-school exams.
I'm very, very sorry. That literally startled me. I'm sorry. If you could start to wrap up, that would be helpful.
Okay. I don't think it's good preparation for college, you know, that's projects and papers, S-BAC and NGSS testing, there's so much good attention to that appropriately for how to reduce the student stress, and how it's thoughtfully scheduled. And those are mandatory. And now I find out that, you know, we're adding all this stress on the kids. It sounds like some of the teachers are sort of like making up comprehensive assessments, like they feel like they have to, rather than just have something that's, you know, going along naturally. So, you know, we know the stress is worse after the pandemic, we know that mental health and social emotional wellness is supposed to be a priority for Guilford, supposedly. So I really, and lastly, I wanted to say that I really think that times are different now, and our community is being sold short in terms of what people would support. I really think so. And you guys have shown you don't have to be scared about what people are going to say, you know, we can do the right thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's our public, who's present. I'm not seeing anyone else. So, we have, last night, heard from a number of folks, had the pleasure of having several people come tonight, have some emails that we've received, email communication that we've received on a couple of issues as well. I think there, I would suggest there are opportunities for a couple of things here. We've heard about classroom sizes. I do think it would be perhaps helpful to talk a little bit how the administration, the Board of Ed, looks at enrollment, and looks at class sizes, and makes those, tries to make those decisions. There may be other topics we've heard about over the last few days, in which we can talk about what we've heard, and then there's also an opportunity, if board members have questions yet, that would be helpful, as each of us is poring over the books, we could do a little bit of that tonight as well, if people think that's.
I think class size is a great place to start.
Okay. Would you, I mean, I don't know if you want to start, I want to start, but if you would talk a little bit about kind of what the administration does every year, how we kind of look at class sizes. I will note that the administration and the Board of Ed is guided by our own Board of Ed policies, which, which give ranges for each of the grades that guide decisions. So for, for kindergarten, I was going to say it off the top of my head, I'll make sure I say it correctly. For kindergarten, this is, this is policy 6011, for kindergarten, 15 to 20 per a classroom is what we are aiming for. For grades one and two, 16 to 22 students per class. For grades three and four, 18 to 24. There is also guidance in our policy around upper grades five and six, 18 to 26, seven and eight, 19 to 27, and nine to 12, 19 to 28. I will also note before turning this over to Dr. Freeman, who will potentially repeat this as well in his comments, having four elementary schools across the district is a challenge, right? In the sense that, at any given time, any of our elementary schools has a larger kindergarten ratio, a larger first grade, a larger second grade. I will note that, I'm in my 13th year on the, on the board, just started my 13th year, I think what made last year a little bit unusual is the, the gap in the ratio, that typically, we've always had classrooms in one school be a little larger than the other. And there's not really much we can do about that. Quite frankly, if we even tried to redistrict, you could solve a problem in kindergarten and cause a problem in second grade, right? Because families don't have a kid in each grade, that's just not how we all work. So, so every year, there's this guidance that our administration is following, and that the board is paying attention to, and then there's a look across, across the schools, and an attempt to predict, because that is what has to happen, what will the, what the enrollment will be, based on a very solid start with the numbers we have in the given year, and to guess about who, how many might move in, which is, as you can imagine, impossible to completely accurate predict. So I'm going to turn it over to you for kind of how the administration approaches this.
Yeah, I'm happy to have this conversation tonight, and clearly, over the last two nights, the most prevalent comment was about class size, and that's what we heard, more comments than any other topic. I passed out that class size guidance that the board distributes, and to make it clear, when I talk about or write about class sizes, I'm talking about those guidelines that the board establishes. I mean, when, when we talk about class sizes at the elementary level, from 20 to 24, those are, by state standards, small classes. Additionally, I will share the documents that we share with you every October, when we report out on the official enrollment. This version of the document is actually not the October 1 official numbers, this has been updated to reflect the numbers as of January 12.
Great.
So, Dr. Balistraci, to your point, when you look at the class sections K through four, the average size of a class section in Guilford Public Schools, K through four this year, is 17. So the class ratios, the targets that you talked about, go from 15 to 24 in grades K through four. In, in our schools, the average class size is 17.1. If we were looking at averages, we're doing really well. To the other point you made, the difficulty with averages is they don't tell the real story. In fact, they obscure the real story. And the challenge this year, more than any other year, wasn't the average class size, it was the extremes. And in my 13 years here, we had the greatest variation of extremes this year. In fact, we attempted to be fairly creative, and we offered an opportunity to creatively redistrict from the largest kindergarten classes to the smallest kindergarten classes this year. And while that was a creative suggestion, it turned out not to be an effective suggestion. We had almost no interest. It didn't help to balance those extremes. The difficulty with the kindergarten staffing this year, and we've heard people reference it, Lakes went above 60 very early in the kindergarten registration process. We knew that if we offered three sections at Lakes, they would all be over 20. They would be at or over 20. So very early in the process, we reapportioned an additional kindergarten section to Lakes. We watched enrollments over the summer, because we were watching Cox sit at the cusp with 54, or 55, or 56 students, but not breaking that upper limit of 20. At the same time, we were watching Liette, which was really low, and, and Liette was enrolling right around 40 students. And, and the difficulty was, do we reduce a section at Liette, bring that down to 20 and 20 early in the process, and then any additional enrollment would push us over the upper limit? Or, do we leave it at three sections, which is actually straining the lower limit by staying at three? And then at Cox, do we add a section? And so, we, we waited, and we ended up with Cox that stayed right at the very upper limit. It hasn't violated the limit, it sits at 20 and 18, but it's right at the very high end. And Liette, that actually dropped below the very low end of coming in at 15. In the budget that I shared with you, the budget draft that I shared with you, slide 18 looked at possible additions and reductions to this budget. On slide 18, we suggested both, an addition of an elementary teaching position, and I said at that meeting, that we would want to wait until later in the process, but that if we decided to increase FTEs, that that addition could go to the first grade at Cox. I also suggested a reduction of an elementary position, and that was labeled as the fourth grade position at Liette. Now, if you look at these breakdowns, you'll see that the third grade at Liette has 48 students. That will likely carry forward to be three sections. The reduction that could and would be made, would in fact be in the first grade at Liette, so that those 39 students moving into first grade would move into two sections of 19 and 20. That falls comfortably within the first and second grade ranges of 16 to 22. And, and, I, I'll, these suggestions appear on the possible adjustments, and not in the initial draft, because of how sensitive this conversation is. We knew that this was going to be a conversation moving forward. I'm also acutely aware of the fact that the budget is currently sitting at 5.4%. So, I think, I came into this knowing that there needed to be conversation about the elementary FTEs. I think it's clear from the last two nights, that this is a decision that you, the full board, will make. But going into that decision, I wanted to be clear that we're looking at the class sizes, again, for, for first and second grade, the, the district guidelines are from 16 to 22. And you could achieve that range, not with an addition at Cox, but with a reduction at Liette. It helps to reduce that variation, not in the way that we're hearing, right, not by adding and keeping class sizes low, but you, the board knows, there's always a tension between the size of the budget and keeping class sizes low. And again, I want to go back to where I started. Thirteens are really small, but elementary schools with 20 to 24 across K to four would be described by any Connecticut educator as, as positive class sizes and small class sizes. I just want to, to be really clear about that. And, and when you look at this distribution, most of the classes, we, we have 61 sections of kindergarten classes. By far, most of them fall into the teens. There are a handful that hit 20, 21, and 22. There's not a single class section on this list that rises to 23 or 24, which would be the upper limit of, of the board ranges for, for elementary classrooms. So, I know how difficult that suggestion is, and I know that there's going to be, going to be a lot of conversation between and among board members about whether this is an add, or whether this is, is a reduction, in order to address, again, not the average number. If we had one district-wide elementary school with K to four classes in it, we could balance these classes really neatly. It's difficult when you have four neighborhood schools that are districted by address, and that's, that's what we continue to wrestle with. And those disparities happen every year. To my memory, they've never happened to the extent that they happened this year.
And, and, you know, as, just for the public, as, as we're looking at this, I can tell you, again, as of January 12th, Jones has the largest fourth grade classes, Cox has the largest third grade, Jones has the largest second grade, Lakes has the largest first grade, Cox has the largest kindergarten.
And Cox has, by far, the largest kindergarten section.
So, to my point before, right, this, this is what happens, right? Per grade, it changes. And, and we do see, you know, gaps in other years, it's just that last year was, was just an odd year, and, 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 and an attempt at predicting, and, and we didn't know. Also, a lot to think about then, as, as we move forward.
Can I ask a question, Dr. Freeman? I know at Lakes, we added a kindergarten this year that wasn't anticipated, but if I do the math for first grade, I'm just, I'm not asking you to like make decisions, but like, that seems to be another area where, are we going to need four sections? We don't know, because we haven't even seen full kindergarten enrollment yet.
You're referencing the current first grade class?
Yeah.
Moving to second grade?
No, I'm talking about the kindergarten group moving up to, yeah.
So, right, so.
We created a fourth kindergarten teacher at Lakes.
Right. And so next year, this budget accounts for four first grade teachers, but it only accounts for three kindergarten teachers coming in behind them.
Okay.
But to your point.
Just flipping, yeah.
But, but to your point, we could reduce an additional position at Lakes, creating first grades at Lakes, that would also be 20, 20, and 21. Still falling within that first grade projected range, but starting to get a little closer. Now, if you have three students move into that community, you're pushing, you're literally pushing up against the upper limit. pushing up against the upper limit. Whereas going to 20s, it still gives you five or six students who could move in before you start pushing that upper limit.
Yep.
So we've got.
It's the same thing like, sorry, at Jones, where we have a first grade with four sections right now. Like as everyone advances up, there's going to be.
Yes.
Yep.
I'm just pointing this out because you could look at any dynamic here and there's going to be where all these kids are moving up a grade, the grade before them was larger than they are. So then that contracts. So then what happens to that fourth teacher or the fourth classroom, right? You're constantly looking at this like a big, not just per school, but.
And we've moved teachers, right? We've moved teachers.
And yes, teachers will change grade levels to accommodate.
If you have a large, if you have a large fourth grade at Lakes in a given year and the upcoming third grade is smaller, oftentimes we've moved the teacher to first grade to accommodate a large kindergarten class, right?
And this is some of the.
This is an example of how.
I'm sorry, Dick's trying to say something.
No, I was just saying, this, it's just a perfect example of how this.
Dick Hirsch has been trying to speak for a few minutes. For a while, actually.
He's not shy. He can.
We have two problems. One is, we've got a built-in structural problem. We've got two, we've got more schools than if we were centralized. But that's a given. We're not going to change that.
Neighborhood schools have lots of positives, right?
But that creates a new problem. And the new problem is that every year, we're going to have some inequity. And there's, but that, that really ends up only being able to get resolved at the budget level. This, this turns into a budget problem. If we had, if we had, if budget wasn't the problem, we could easily add a teacher. We could say, there's an inequity across, I mean, even though we are right on the cusp, we might say for educational reasons, we'd rather suffer lower class sizes by adding a teacher than, than, so it's really a $70,000 problem. It's a one-tenth to one percent problem to add one teacher. That's, that's what we're facing. We have no control over the rest of it. So the, so the question is, should we find, try to find an additional $70,000? Or are there other reasons why in fact that would be wrong? That is, that it creates a principle that we don't want to have, a precedent that gets us in trouble. And from educational reasons, we don't, we certainly help ourselves by adding a teacher. I would argue, by the way, again, understanding the budget, anytime we, it looks like adding a teacher helps kids and class size. On principle, I would say, we should, we should try to find ways of doing it in the budget. As opposed, because we don't have enough tolerance in our budget at the moment that gives us the flexibility for administrators to make this decision without us having to go through this. I mean, so either we have to build in each year $100,000 to $150,000 that says, this is flex money. We're telling you upfront, and if we got to do things, here it is. Okay, if you take it away, we're going to get fined like this. But that's how we, or, I mean, we haven't even yet suffered some reduction that the Board of Finance might throw at us. Which happens every year. And they're not allowed to tell us where they're going to do that. So I'm arguing for enlarging the conversation and saying, is there a way in which we can acknowledge our structural deficit geographically and figure out a remedy, at least in the longer, if not this year? Some pot of money that allows us to resolve those issues without it becoming a major discussion? Because we've, we've always done the right thing when we, when we found the money. We put teachers in, we needed it. And your remarks suggested that we need, we're waiting for the numbers. The numbers are sort of telling us what we should be doing or giving us clues. But in some sense, because we don't have that budget flex, we've caused a great deal of consternation on the part of parents. And it may not be needed, or maybe we should figure out a way of avoiding that in the future by talking about this as a budget level.
Well, the other complicating factor that I would suggest is that the board policy suggests that there is a changing range, that the top of the, the top of the class size is 20 in kindergarten, but 24 in grade four. And, and oftentimes, when the class sizes fall comfortably within the middle of that range, we don't make adjustments. The challenge now with the kindergarten currently at Leet and the possibility of the first grade at Cox, if we add another section, is that would we then collapse a section when those students move into third grade? Or are we suggesting that class sizes of 13 or 14 and 15 should carry through all the way to fourth grade? In which case, we should revisit, because in fact, this policy says that every October, I report out to you on any discrepancies which would be above or below the limit. Now, every October, I share this document with you and I take you to the high points and the low points. But if we were to move in that direction, we'd end up below these recommendations. And again, if you look at the average, we are below those recommendations. Now, and again, averages obscure all sorts of, of truth. But if you went by average, we're below in, in some of these areas. And so, again, I, I agree with everything that you just said, but it, there's, it's a complicated conversation because of the, the responsibility to the taxpayer and only asking for as much as we think we need to effectively instruct those children.
But we're a victim of our own success.
Yes.
That is, we set these, we've set these ranges and we've stayed within them.
Even at the low end, in most cases.
But the norm in the community is now set at a level that, independent of our ranges, the norm is actually below that.
Yeah.
And so, I say this in a good sense.
We've created an expectation, yes.
We've got a community that in some sense values the lower numbers. It really only becomes a question of, are they willing to pay, are we willing to pay for that? If the answer is, the community is saying, it's the most important thing we can do, and I think we heard in the early remarks, put it out there and let's assume that the, you know, people would vote for it. If we're really wrong about that, then we're wrong about that. But I think we're doing it for the right rea, if we think it's educationally correct and if we think that in fact, we're at the upper limits of even a reasonable range, I'm not, we're.
Yes.
The fact that we're beating the average in the state, in some sense, is irrelevant if I'm a community member. I don't care what other people are doing. I want my kid in a small class. And I, and that's what, that's what we're hearing. We moved here. And the nice thing about it is, generally speaking, we've been able to accommodate. This, this is working. And we're now a victim of the fact that it's working so well that people won't tolerate the margin. And I'm trying to figure out a way of us budgeting that we don't face this dilemma yearly, because we can predict, even if we end up doing it in March.
I would suggest that means returning to the policy because we would be codifying a different reality than what the policy.
I want to be careful.
But I also think we need to consider the fact that a lot of what we're hearing as well is not, it's also the inequities that.
Yes. It's the variation, not.
That's always going to exist.
Yes.
It's never going to go away. I mean, you look at Leet, and we're always going to have small class sizes at Leet unless we start reducing classes.
But again, I was cautious to reduce the kindergarten. The reduction at the first grade with what appears to be a now stabilized enrollment makes more sense based on this policy. But I assure you, the Leet parents weren't here for the last two nights. If we had a third night tomorrow night of public comment, I assure you, after everything that I just said, there would be Leet parents here tomorrow night commenting on every comment that I just made.
Jen, please. So I'm going to piggyback on the equity thing. I mean, it's, it's stated right in our, it's on the back page of the, the class size. Equity among and between grade levels in the elementary schools is desirable. I think what I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, but what I, what, reading all the emails from all the parents and hearing all the parents, I'm going to take you guys back to last year's budget season when Leet did come in and made the exact same arguments and we jumped at it and we gave them a teacher. And now we've actually had more parents speak up from A W Cox than we ever did from Leet last year, using those same arguments. And we're like, yeah, no. And they're getting some pushback. And I think what I'm hearing is some frustration at that. At least that's what I heard last night. And the, again, you can't get a true tone from the emails, but that is how I am reading those emails. And I can't say that I disagree with them, given the, the very recent history of another school doing this and that school having such significant lower numbers than the parents that we're talking about right now. So I'm just going to make that equity argument, that I think that they're, they're making the right equity argument, and I think it's on multiple levels, not just numbers.
Yeah, I'll lend my voice to that. I agree, the inequity, regardless of whether it's a Leet thing that continues, we still have to address it. It's our job.
And do, is there a way, this is, you know, we kind of broached the subject last night. We're always going to have these variances. And, and sometimes we may be able to solve them with an additional class, sometimes we might not be able to. How are we supplementing our teachers with these larger classes in terms of para usage, right? So that maybe we, you know, our ratios are higher in those larger classes, but if we're, if we're supplementing that with paras, is there, is there a happy medium there in which those, those children in the larger class sizes are getting the dedicated teaching that they're, that they need? I mean, I understand that we may be able to cycle paras throughout larger classes to be able to assist the teacher. Is that within the realm of a, of a solution or?
We have in the past 13 years, and we've done that in cases where the class size has actually gone above the, the recommended. So you've got a third grade class that is now hitting 25 or 26. In those cases, we have assigned a para professional to the two or three classes at that grade level to be shared across those teachers. That often becomes more super, support supervision rather than instruction, but it can be instructional. That hasn't happened in years. And, and our para assignments and even our para training has tended to be much more focused on special education supports, with the exception of kindergarten. Every kindergarten section, whether we have a year of 12 or 13, there was a year we had 14 kindergarten sections. Every kindergarten section has a half-day para professional assigned to that classroom. So it's been suggested, it's certainly a possibility. I think in the past, when it's come up, we have probably defaulted to adding a section more often than adding para support, especially in the last four or five years. I mean, the last several years, I've come to you and said, we budgeted for 12 kindergarten sections, but we need 13. Or we need, and you could, you could look at, at each grade level to see where those adjustments were made. I think, I remember one year where we only filled 12 kindergarten sections. More often than not, we've extended, and to Dr. Hirsch's point, and, and ended up catching up. We'll be doing it this year. You know that there is a teaching position in the budget this year that is not budgeted for, that needs to get caught up next year. And it's the, it's the 13th kindergarten section that was assigned to Lakes to keep them from hitting 20, 20, and 21.
A couple of thoughts as we continue this. I, I, I hear the concern from parents. I want to be very careful unless we are seriously considering changing our guidelines about how we approach this and about how we approach our discussions. We have differences of four students in grade two across various classrooms. We have differences of seven students across grade three this year. We could, if we're going to consider this, we could have a number of parents in other grades coming to us and saying, how do we deal with these discrepancies? All of them, all of them within our guidelines. Every single classroom in the district.
Part of the problem is that the, the Leet, the Leet classes don't fall within our guidelines.
That's right.
That's exactly right. And I, and I think it was an expectation.
They fall below.
That's right. That's exactly right. No, this was, I mean, again, we've, we've had this problem every year for the 13 years I've been on board, never this extreme.
True.
This is just a very odd year.
And, and I just want to own this, right? I was not prepared with the kindergarten class to come forward and say, we're going to reduce a kindergarten and we're going to start the year with two sections of 19 and 20. I was just afraid that if even one student moved in, or two, we're now violating that.
That's the right decision.
I hate to be the one saying this.
It's the right decision.
But at the first grade, you could make that reduction and now you have room for as many as five or half a dozen students to move in before you're pushing the upper limit. Now, I have never, in 13 years, made that suggestion, but, but no, you're exactly right. We're violating the guidelines, not exceeding the guideline. We're failing to meet the guideline at one location. And that's exactly why this didn't appear until, I don't know, slide 13 of my presentation when I offered it, because this is the conversation we need to have. And I, I wasn't going to build that change either into my first draft of this budget. It needed to be something that was open to the community, got a lot of conversation, and we need to wrestle with it. I apologize, you need to wrestle with this before it becomes the board budget rather than our first draft.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And it may be data we don't have yet or compiled to AM. This is more directed at you. Performance of our students, if we looked at a very traditionally small building like Leet versus, honestly, versus, I don't even want, that's not the comparison. How would the performance weigh out with our kids? Is there a way to measure that? And I'm not looking for that.
I think there's so many factors.
There's so many factors, right? And so there isn't, you can't quantify, or can you quantify a child who sat in a classroom of 13 for a year versus a child who sat in a classroom of 19? Or can you?
I mean, we could certainly look at any individual.
No, no.
We could certainly look at any individual measure. I mean, we have universal screenings. So we could use those as a data point. I can't say off the top of my head with any precision how that looks. I would have to look at every single section and see, you know, see what that looks like over time. My sense, though, is not that we would see variation, with the class sizes as generally small as we have, I don't think we would see wild variation. But I would have to go back and gather that data.
I also think, right, I mean, my understanding, and there are those on the board more informed than I, class size is not unimportant. Class size is not the only factor. The quality of teaching that happens in a classroom has been shown to be more important than class size. So I, I think there are a lot of factors.
And the conversation we're having is not, I don't think it's necess, I mean, obviously we're hearing size, but we're, we're hearing inequity, right?
No, absolutely. I think that's right.
And I don't, and I'm thinking in, in terms of, you know, in terms of policy, right? So that we could figure out a solution to this moving forward so that we don't have to do this every year. I wonder if there is a way in which we could scope the policy around building in safeguards for inequities. I know we can't change the class sizes, but is there a method in which, when there is a discrepancy of X between class sizes, that triggers the need for an additional teacher?
Well.
Do you follow, I mean, it's, it would be very complicated to figure out a way to, to write that, but we're well within our scope of, of size, right? We're, we're falling well inside policy of, of, of class size. What's not, what's not happening is we're not balancing it because we can't. So do we, do we have an interim method to do so?
But the, I would suggest that, that, again, the issue here, based on our policy, is not that Cox has 20, 18, and 18, it's that Leet has 13, 13, and 13. So you know this, right? You wouldn't add a teacher here, you would subtract one after you started school, which of course, we would not do. And, and, and I think that's where it gets complicated here.
And the complication here is that because of timing and because we don't have, we don't close registration on the first day of school, right? It's a rolling registration. If students moved into the Leet neighborhood who were kindergartners tomorrow, we would enroll them into those Leet kindergarten.
Come on in the Leet. They can come in the Leet.
Well, so, so if this policy were written more strictly, and if it didn't say things like, to the extent possible, and if I wasn't worried about the numbers changing, I would have come to you in August and reduced a section at Leet. If I had to meet these guidelines, both upper and lower limits, before the first day of school every year, we would have made the reduction at Leet. And then we wouldn't be dealing with necessarily the, the variance in the class sizes. We'd have two schools that were up against the upper limit. And again, it's the first time I've found myself in this situation. But as kindergarten becomes grade one and as the upper limit changes to create more movement, from a policy perspective, the right response to this is not to add, but to reduce a teacher and not to respond to, to the, what we've heard the parents saying. to what we've heard the parents saying, but to follow the policy. To Dr. Hersch's point, the alternate response is to violate the lower limit in two of the schools, not in one, in first grade. And that would lead us to then have to revisit this. If we were to lower the lower limit and leave the upper limit where it is, we would be increasing the possibility of variance moving forward, right? If you wanted to decrease variance, you'd have to lower the lower limit and lower the upper limit, and the tighter you make it, the more impossible it's going to become with four schools.
Well, and you increase the equity then over the other grades, for which none of this is happening. I think, you know, I mean, I'm going to say something very obvious, right? With unlimited resources, this would not be the discussion we are having. That's not our reality. We are funded by a very supportive community to whom we are expected to be responsive. I am concerned that we, at the moment, are looking at a 5.4% increase as well. And really, it is not an unusual increase. We're starting to see.
Sevens coming in statewide.
We're starting to see what the other towns, 7%, 6%, 6.5%, what the other towns are seeing. So 5.4% at the moment is looking on the lower end. But it's not a conversation that happens in a vacuum. It's a conversation that happens within a budget and a town that supports us, and one that we have to keep in mind. So I just, a lot to think about here. John, to your point, I was interested in where you're going, because there was an attempt at a creative solution to this.
It was wildly creative and completely ineffective.
And understandable, but understandable.
It's hard, no, 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 but right, so there was, there was an offer to students, parents
at Cox of kindergarteners, to have their kindergartner go to LEET. And I think a family took us up on that. It's understandable. I get that, right? I mean, I'm not sure that I would want to commit to five years of driving my kid to another district, to them going to a school that's not in their community, right? So this is, it's not, I'm not in any way suggesting, there's not a really good rationale why that didn't work. But it is worth trying to understand if there are other ways to try to address inequities in the future.
But there are. I mean, we don't need an unlimited budget to solve this. That's number one. Number two, we're facing potential increases in numbers of students in the next five years.
Correct.
So this is not going to be, this is, what we're doing now is discussing what we'd be discussing for five years, any more kids are moving in. Number three, the guidelines that we are, guidelines, they're not laws, and they're in some sense arbitrary. Those numbers could be, can move anyway. We could up them, we can down them. The fact is, is that we got the benefit of four schools in the sense that at least one school, you know, gets great numbers. And that's how we're geographically set up. I just accept that as a fact. We don't have to like it, okay? And it creates problems of equity across, but I think we can solve that problem. I think it ultimately is, assuming that we have good educational reasons for making the decision, it is a money problem. It's not, we're talking about 1/10 of 1% for one teacher of our budget. We've got to be able to figure out how we can talk to the community and say, "You're not going to turn the budget down because we decided to put, you know, a 5.55% as opposed to 5.47." Or, "We're always going to make a case for a budget in which we're going to try to have a priority for things like teachers, okay?" We're not going to, we're not going to make any excuses for raising our budget, for adding personnel if it's good for kids, whether it's nurses or whether it's mental health people. And to me, that's worthy of a conversation and to say it. And if budget gets voted down, and it's out there, because 70, 75% of our budget are salaries, okay? So be it, then we'll know, but.
But I would argue that we've always done that. I would always argue that we always prioritize, I'm not arguing against you, I'm saying that in my seven, almost seven years on the board, we have always, at least I know we voted to prioritize our teachers and our children, like, that's first and foremost. And then the other things are the things we kind of go to, to try to pull out when we have to. So I don't think it's right to, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, the portrayal of us not prioritizing our educators, I don't think is correct. I think when I'm looking at this policy and Mr. Valentin Delvatore, John showed me what Madison is doing, like, our low range is very low.
Yes.
Comparative to other districts. And I don't think we've have to, we haven't dipped in there very often, at least in my time here. We are now, and, but I just, I just want to, I just don't think it's as simple as putting another teacher, although, yes, if the money was there, of course, we would support it. I am just really worried that we are at a 5.4%, and we have to find ways, and the Board of Finance is going to ask us to find ways, we always protect our teachers, and we always try to protect the services that connect to our children. And this is not a fluffy budget. There's not a lot there. And so I just get nervous when we start saying that, because as it stands, I'm worried, you know, that we're going to be told we have to pull something. And to your point, a teacher's salary is not a big number, but if you take a few of them, it is, and that's not the thing we want to be doing. So I'm just being more cognizant of, like, the end goal, and the end goal is to get this through town, and I want our communities to support it. But I also recognize that that's a big number for folks to adjust to when our property taxes have already gone.
But it represents, it represents another fact that is not well-known. This is, and has been, for the last 10 years, a very tight budget. Nobody can find budget items that shouldn't be in there. They're all defensible. And we've been very good about making sure that there's nothing in there that can't be defended. The fact is, because of the economy and inflation, so, we are so tight, we are so tight, that I don't want us to make the mistake of taking the principle of trying to be parsimonious, as we have been, and then on the margin, make a mistake, alienate not only the community, but in fact, create an algorithm that won't work in the next three or four years anyway. I'm making the case that going forward, we're facing a money issue in the budget that we haven't faced in the last five or eight years, and we're starting to face that this very minute. And it's, I think it is a money issue, because I can't think of any place else in the budget I can quickly cut $70,000. We're, you know, we've been battered for the last four or five years on athletics, and we're still not there, and there we've done marginal increases. Where else do we find the money? So I'm saying that we can justify our budget against, we already know we're spending $2,000 or $3,000 per student less than many of our competitive districts.
Yes.
And we're getting better results. Okay, what are we going to do to stay there? We're going to have to make sure that we don't lose, you know, our educational benefits.
And the point you make, Dr. Hersch, is important, that if at some point there is a direction to reduce this budget, and whether that comes at the Board of Finance, who only controls the bottom line, or at the referendum, which also only speaks to a bottom line, but if at some point this board is directed to change a 5.4 to a 4.9, it is very difficult.
Then we can't do it.
Right, without going to staffing positions, because it has to be $70,000 five or 10 times to get to that magnitude of a number, and you can't do it by going to workbooks or bulletin boards, because there's simply, there's only 30% of our budget that exists in those other items compared to the salaries.
And then at that point, I would say the Board of Finance made us do it and make sure the public understands that.
I think for me, Dick, I mean, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I just don't think this is, I don't think we're talking about one position here. I think we're talking about the approach we take to each of our classroom enrollments based on our policy and based on what other decisions we make. And if we are going to ignore the upper and lower limits for one classroom, I don't mean to overdramatize or overstate this one, we should be prepared for our parents in other grades to come forward and say, "Hey."
You did it for them.
You did it for them. And again, in a vacuum, fabulous to consistently have really low class sizes. I don't think that's sustainable based on community support, and particularly in the environment, economic environment we're in. No, go ahead.
Well, I agree with you. I mean, I want value for our education for sure, and I'm very cognizant of the taxpayers' dollars for sure. However, we did hear from dozens of taxpayers for both athletics, dozens and dozens and dozens, of both athletic supporters and obviously Cox parents. We can't ignore that, frankly. They're asking us to spend the money on that. They're being very specific. And these are people who gave us our votes, who gave us their donations, and who supported us in troubled times, and I frankly can't sit back and ignore them at all. However, your point is valid, and a precedent could be set, but there is an inequity here that needs to be addressed. And I would rather be on the good side of the voters who I know would rather have smaller class sizes than to adjust LEET into a higher level. But the inequity does need to be adjusted, and we can't just blame it on the fact that this will happen every year. Every year, we have an amazing administration that deals with this, and we have to deal with it.
Yeah, no, 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 and I do think, again, this, I don't think we've ever seen a gap this far, but it certainly has pointed out.
Well, someone mentioned earlier about, can we create a new guideline about inequity? When a certain inequity, that triggers, that triggers another decision without having to change our guidelines.
I mean, is it possible?
We don't have it now.
I mean, the upper and lower limits, in effect, do that. I don't know if you want to write an additional algorithm that.
You figure that out, because that's what.
Yeah, I don't know.
But it doesn't, it allows us to keep the policy in place.
Right.
And 99% of the time, that policy is going to be the law of the land. We're going to be able to follow that. But it does create a, at least a path for us, when we have these classes of 13 versus classes of 20, to look at that and say, "We need to fix that inequity."
Can I just pause for a minute, just to point out? I just need to say that I am so excited and thrilled and proud of the conversation that, from the quality of the public comments that have been made, to the value that you, the conversation that is happening right here is just an example of how this is supposed to be. And so the comments about transparency earlier, I'm just really proud that this is the conversation that is happening. It's still a tough choice. I mean, right, and, and we're dealing with topic one that has come up in our discussion on this budget yet. There remains 79 other items that we need to talk about before you finalize a bottom line here. And some of them are boring and non-discretionary things that we have to put into the budget, like healthcare. But this is, I'm just really proud of the conversation that's happening here right now.
Well, and I, and I haven't, on my own, figured out how we would do this and more conversation, but I like the idea of having.
A mechanism in place.
Well, but having, 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 I don't know what it looks like. Who knows how we'll get there.
It's just another zoom.
But having guidelines and inequity consideration that gives some kind of.
Support for that, yeah.
Again, I don't know what it looks like, because, because part of it, too, some of this is, I'm a math person, you know, statistics.
Better you than me.
You know, but the point is, this turns, this, the inequities change depending on also the number of classes, right? So literally with LEET, two more kids, and you would not, two more kids in that, if you had 13, 14, and 14, you would not combine them. Because you would, to two classes, you would go over our limit.
And so what I worry about.
There's a built-in seven-person gap.
What I worry about with that idea is that the discretion that I applied at the end of last year, moving into this year, that created the problem, right? The policy says what should have been done, and I should have collapsed those three sections into two at the LEET kindergarten last year before this started. I was worried that we'd then have later rivals through the summer.
And all you needed was two.
Yes, in that way. But, but I worry that if we write some other formula or algorithm that does that, not based on an upper and lower limit, but on a variance, that then I'm still going to argue at a policy table someday, "Don't say must, say should," or, because there has to be some discretion. And the fact is that I created the problem by not applying the policy in a more draconian fashion a year ago. And now we're here this year, and because kindergarten and first and second grade have different limits, I'm saying, "Well, now you could do it, and it's not as draconian, but it is taking something away, which we usually do not do." And I'm in a, and I'm not particularly appreciating being in that position right now.
Well, let's be clear. You did not make the wrong decision last year. You made the right educational decision in favor of smaller classes. And so I wouldn't second-guess that at all. The fact that it creates a new problem this year is something we have to suffer, but it was not the wrong decision.
Yeah, and I wouldn't want any more, like, talking about this algorithm and setting up something else, it's just more legislation, to me, it's like, okay, let's just legislate everything to death, until, rather than giving it the freedom and the flexibility that we have. So I would, I would not want to limit ourselves in that way. I like these discussions and options, but.
And I suggest that it's not going to solve our problem for next year, in any case, right? So this conversation, to me, suggests we have things that we could potentially think about in terms of a policy moving forward in the short term, over the next couple of weeks, as we're all looking at these books, as we, as a board, continue to discuss, we have a short-term decision to make around class distribution for next year.
And traditionally, you, as a board, don't make these decisions individually until you've talked through all of them.
100%.
I do think that we have clarified this situation fairly thoroughly in the last few minutes. But we will, or you will likely circle back to this after we've talked about 79 other items in this list, and whether those are going to go up or going to go down, and you make a determination about what your final budget will and will not include.
Excellent. Were there other, other topics that we wanted to address tonight in this session?
I think what would be, what would be nice for a public conversation is the thoughts around intervention, and just kind of, you know, if we could just scratch the surface of that.
Universal screening, or answering some clarifying questions or something.
Yeah, and I'm happy to sort of tee that up and to point out that the Board of Education had a full committee meeting early last night in the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee that spoke to that topic. I think the first thing that I want to clear up, and I think it was a question from earlier tonight, we are not in violation of any state statute or mandate. We do employ universal screens, and we are in compliance with all of the expectations of the state. Having said that, it's also fair to say that we do not employ universal screening or whole grade or whole school assessment to the degree or in the way that many other, mostly larger districts around the state of Connecticut do. We employ them, I think, in a thoughtful, integrated way that continues to prioritize the diagnostic and individual instructional excellence of our classroom teachers. We do engage in intervention. Most of the interventions in which we engage are delivered by the regular classroom teacher in the regular classroom setting with peers. We do provide some intervention in pull-out settings from specialists, but again, compared to some other districts, we do that in a more limited fashion. I think with that broad comment, I don't, I would offer to Dr. Goss, if you wanted to add any greater detail to that, or to any board members, because again, we had a, we had a 90-minute conversation on this topic last evening, just happened to be before the public hearing, and we didn't have the audience that we had present last night to witness that conversation.
I just think it's so important to state what you're stating, and just what, you know, how we are, you know, how we are screening versus how other districts are screening.
And it's not to say that what other districts do are wrong, or that the suggestions that were made are not thoughtful and logical suggestions. And in fact, we have moved in the direction of more universal assessment, more screening, and more structured intervention over the last four or five years, but we haven't moved to the, again, we're not in the same place that some other districts are in the way that they, we don't use it at the same frequency, and we may not use it in the same structured way to sort and level and pull students out of mainstream instruction. We talked quite a bit over the last two years about, about a model of acceleration rather than remediation. And what we focus on is not pulling a student out of grade-level instruction with classmates in order to provide remediation from the grade level before. in order to provide remediation from the grade level before, where they may have gaps. The model of acceleration is to help our teachers become expert in keeping the students in the mainstream classroom so that they're not losing current grade-level instruction while filling those gaps. And to be absolutely clear, that requires talented teachers, and it leans on those classroom teachers significantly, which is why it's important that we continue to employ really thoughtful educational leaders as principals in this building and this district. We don't hire managers, we hire instructional leaders, and then that we have really well-trained coaches so that the teachers are always learning how to manage that workload. And it ties directly to the previous conversation, because that is best achieved with small classes. And again, when I talk about small classes, I'm talking from the guidelines. It is difficult to achieve that in fourth-grade classes of 30. It is reasonable to expect well-supported, well-trained, talented teachers to achieve that in classrooms of 18 or 20. And again, our class average is 17 at those grade levels. So I asked you to talk, and then I kept talking. Was there any detail that you want to add to that?
She didn't know her story.
No. I think that a lot of districts use commercial products as their universal screeners.
That's, thank you.
And, and so it's, so people expect to see a line item in a budget that says, you know, $30,000 for the 5 through 8 universal screening. We do universal screenings that are embedded within the work that we're doing in our classrooms anyway. We use that data to look at students, to figure out what students need to learn, and to program for individual kids. It's just not a separate line item in our budget. So the one place you will see that is in the state-mandated literacy assessments at the primary level. And that's because there are specific choices from which we, we need to choose, and so we had to do that. And we do have a specific commercial product that addresses the universal screening at the primary literacy level. And beyond that, these are all program-embedded universal assessments, and they do go through, actually through 12th grade, though those tend to be more course assessments as common formative assessments, sort of more typically what you'd expect to see in any given course. But I really, I feel passionately that people need to hear very clearly, we do indeed have universal screenings at all levels, and in both literacy and in math, they are just not separately purchased commercial products.
And to that point, the, the focus that you see in this year's budget, moving from a district-wide specialist model to, to prioritizing not just the literacy coach, but also a full-time math coach in each building K through 8, leans into that direction, providing the additional support for teachers on the mathematics side of that equation. Remember, that focus doesn't involve new monies. That is a reassigning of existing coaching and specialist positions. This budget doesn't request any new coaching positions in this budget. It's a, it's a reallocation of existing human resources.
And one of the, one of the things we heard, understood last night was that the model that we use is for educational purposes, that we argue that the way we do it is much better for kids. It's closer to kids, it's more timely, it's more appropriate, rather than taking global tests where you don't really get as much data per kid. And that, so, it's got nothing to do with that cost, it's got everything to do with the fact that we're choosing a different educational model, and we're choosing the harder one. Demanding that much more of our own teachers locally and doing it with kids often is a, is a more, is a qualitatively more costly, so, so that people don't think that we're, you know, we're just shoving this off. It turns out what we're doing is actually the right way relative to other choices. And others are doing it, I think, for essentially quantitative reasons opposed to qualitative reasons.
We would make that argument. We think that the way we do it ties instruction and assessment norm naturally together into one organic holistic instructional environment, rather than stopping instruction every eight weeks to assess students at the elementary level. To the comments that Polly made earlier, right, the, we still have a fairly traditional exam culture at the high school where we stop for midterms and final examinations. We do not employ that kind of model at the elementary levels, where we're stopping instruction in order to, to provide this rather disconnected commercial product to create that, that, a stratification among students so that we can sort them in those ways. We think this is more holistic and more effective, and we would make that argument, which isn't to denigrate the way that other people choose to do it and the way that other districts do it. We think this is right for us and for our students.
That's a good explanation, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
That was a great explanation, thanks.
Is there anything else we wanted to touch upon tonight?
Dr. Bellistraci, if I may?
Yes, sure.
Do we want to talk about the opportunity of scheduling a special meeting? We do have an athletic conversation that we would like. Up until the last two nights, the preponderance of comments were about athletics.
Yeah.
And we've got a, again, to the comment about transparency, we've got a presentation on athletics that we'd like to tee up, as well as inviting a conversation around athletic spending. So I thought if, if maybe we talked about a special, a night for a special meeting, that would make sense to do while we're all here together.
Okay. So I think the idea then is to do a special meeting that will allow us to hear and, and hear your presentation and participate in a discussion about athletics, which is obviously always important, but particularly timely, in our, and then, in our budget discussion, and then also continue, continue, or, yeah, continue, a budget discussion.
Right.
Possibly diving into some of the specifics here, and.
It doesn't have to be solely athletics. We could certainly discuss and begin deliberations on lots of other topics.
Yeah, I'm going to suggest we do that.
How much time do you think that the athletic presentation would, would take?
I, I think the presentation could be accomplished in, in 15 to 20 minutes. The conversation is going to depend on all of you. I'll blame you, not me, on how long that conversation goes.
I'm going to make a wild suggestion.
I love wild suggestions.
Maybe we gather prior to 7:30. Yeah, maybe we shoot for 6:30. So that, so that we, you know, we allow for the conversation to kind of go on a little bit longer, if we need to.
And I, we can, I can say right now, are people comfortable with next Monday, January 29th, or I can overemail coordinate that, you know, in a way that if people aren't prepared to answer that question.
It works for me.
Fine.
Works for me.
It works for us.
Dr. Faiman, can we submit, we typically submit questions.
Yes.
So we can, this week, if we have, like, specific athletic questions, we can be submitting those as well.
We've received, we've received the first questions that have come in in writing, and Mrs. Trudeau has responded to hers. I have to respond to mine, but we should have the first responses beginning to go out before the end of this week, so please, yes, the written, the written Q and A works really well.
If there's something specific about athletics, it would be nice to get that in before the presentation.
Yeah, and if, and if, I think what we set up, if, if board members email your questions to me, I will pass them on. The advantage of that is that I can call out duplicates and save Linda from having to do that herself.
Okay.
You know what I mean? It just allows a little bit of streamlining and tries to take some of the pressure off Linda.
We should have the first written responses out to all of you before the end of this week.
Terrific.
Yep.
Excellent.
And we'll keep that as a rolling document.
And then I pass them on to Linda and to Paul, because as we know and have heard, some of them are for Linda, some of them are more conservative.
Some go to Dr. Goss and some go to Mr. Bowden.
Right.
Yeah, so we just, we farm them out to the right person to respond, and then we pull them in together into a unified document that we get back to you.
Yeah, 6:30.
6:30.
So I'm hearing 6:30 Monday night.
I think we have a consensus for 6:00 over on this side, so.
Bring in the crudités.
Do 6:00.
6:00.
6:00.
We will get that posted, and we will get information.
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
This side is.
Does that work?
The right wing is calling for 6 o'clock.
No, I understand. Does that work?
Yeah, I may be a little bit late. I just have a hearing that afternoon that starts at 3:30. It could go past 5:00.
I don't want to leave people out.
No, no, I'll just.
We can do 6:30.
No, 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 leave it at 6:00.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
I try it fast.
All right.
The only other thing that I want to note for anybody watching or here tonight is, is to make really clear that the, the class size assignment conversation wasn't closed tonight. There was no decision.
No, that's right, we have not made any decisions.
But I hope that the, the public recognized the depth of the conversation that took place, and that there remains, an answer will, won't come until the very end when you vote on your final budget.
Just shows how complicated it can be, right? I'm so glad we're talking about it and trying to, to find a solution for everybody that feels right.
I'm glad we're not talking about medical insurance bids, or, I mean, we'll get to some of those, too, but this was just a good conversation.
Those are, those are. All right. Well, wonderful. I want to thank the public who came tonight and, and engaged. It's always more, that kind of information is always helpful to us as we try to make the decisions on behalf of our community. I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for joining us tonight. I hope you have a good evening.
Because I talk.